Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. I would also like to welcome all of those who are watching the recording of this meeting online or on our public access channel. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, items on the agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we have a public comment item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on the public comment form located in the back of the room should you wish to speak this evening. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time, and comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out, and any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance being processed by the district, you cannot discuss that during public comment. Also, please understand, if you speak to us on an item not on our action agenda, that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SAISD. We do have a quorum this evening. Mr. Gallegos is going to be unable to be with us this evening, but the rest of our board team is here. And with that, we will move to item two, which is your invocation, and Brett Lane, area representative for the Contra Valley FCA, is going to lead us in that. Thank you for being here.
Heavenly Father, I just thank you for this night. Lord, we thank you for the business that's going to be taken care of. We thank you for the school board, Lord Jesus, and all the work that they're doing. Father, I just want to lift up every campus in town. Lord, I lift up the administration. I lift up the teachers, the coaches, the campus staff, and ask you, Father God, to continue strengthening those people to make the campuses better for the kids. Lord, I also thank you for all of those kids on all of those campuses. And Father, I just lift up the upcoming election, the local election, Lord Jesus, with Proposition A, that the school board is working hard to take care of their people. Father, that's awesome. Father, just be with this meeting. May it go smoothly. Father God, we thank you for our world, for being in charge, for taking care of business, and for loving us. And we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. All right, now we have some students from San Jacinto Elementary. We have Emery Lane, Alejandra Oglen, Cesar Gonzalez, and Delaney Oglen. You all are going to come up and help us with the pledges. Thanks for being here, guys.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas, glad. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Parents, thank you for bringing them. All right, we're going to move forward with some recognitions this evening. And Soon Chau is going to help us first with recognitions of fire prevention poster contest winners. And some of those posters were downstairs as you all walked in, and they were great. So kids, thanks for sharing those with us.
Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. As you mentioned, as you entered the admin building this evening, you may have been greeted by some beautiful artwork. Tonight, we are celebrating our young artists by recognizing our SAISD Fire Prevention Poster Contest winners. This year's Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, highlights the importance of ensuring smoke alarms function properly in order to provide the best possible protection for your home. These students help their campus communicate important information about the actions that they can take to stay safe during a fire emergency through artwork. We are so proud of each of you. Tonight, we'll start by introducing our representatives from the City of San Angelo Fire Marshal's Office and inviting them to the front. We have with us Fire Marshal Billy Clemens, Fire Investigator Inspector Lester Kent, and Administrative Assistant Kendra Owen. Thank you all for being here. Okay, students, now when I call your name, please come forward and remain standing and facing the audience for a group photo with your grade level. We're going to call third grade, fourth grade, and then fifth grade. From third grade, our poster winners are, in fourth place, Caroline Curry from Fort Concho. Third place, Jesslyn Alvarado from Fort Concho Elementary. Second place, Alina Ward from Fort Concho Elementary. And first place, Pepper Ford, also from Fort Concho Elementary. All right. Okay, now you're all going to pose for a picture. All right, thank you, third grade. Okay, now, from fourth grade, our poster winners are, fourth place, Morgan Snook from Bonham Elementary. Third place, Amaya Ramirez from Bonham Elementary. Second place, Emily Decker from Bonham Elementary. And first place, Mary Mahia from Fort Concho, who couldn't be here tonight. All right, and now we have, from fifth grade, our poster winners, fourth place, Baby Butron from Fort Concho, I'm sorry. Third place, Apollo Anofre from Santa Rita Elementary. Second place, Elizabeth Vu from Fort Concho Elementary. And first place, Joy Allen from Santa Rita Elementary. And picture time. Congratulations, and keep up the hard work. And we also appreciate the San Angelo Fire Department and the City of San Angelo Fire Marshal's Office. Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to move forward with recognition of commended students in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. And Soon Shannon, who's doing, or, sorry, who's doing that? Tiffany is. Thanks.
Hi, welcome. We are excited that we have students here tonight that entered the National Merit Scholarship Program. It's a nationwide competition that recognizes and awards students that take the 2003 PSAT-NMSQT, that's a long word, by the way, last October, and they've been named commended students for the 2025 competition. These commended students have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. With this honor and recognition, we hope that it will broaden their educational horizons and encourage them to continue their pursuit of lifelong learning. Commended students in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program are Alvina Sheik from Central High School. And we have Amrita Focati, Focoti, did I say it right, from Central High School. And then we have two students not here, Benjamin Vu and Rowan Zach, they were unable to make it tonight, but they're also our commended scholars as well.
Our viewers online might not hear this, but we give a coin of excellence to state level and national level recognition, so at least we know where you're going to get that tonight. Great job, ladies.
That's great. All right, and our next recognition is going to be for National Principals Month, and Shannon's going to do that one.
Good evening. If you are one of our principals, can you just come this way a little bit, line up on this side of the room? Awesome. So October is National Principals Month, and tonight we're proud to honor our dedicated principals who work tirelessly to help shape the next generation. These men and women are the heart of our schools, creating positive, supportive environments where both students and staff can thrive. A great principal builds character, inspires dreams, encourages creativity, and fosters a love of learning. They don't just lead, they leave a legacy. Their commitment to excellence and resilience embodies San Angelo ISD's mission to engage all students in a relevant and inspiring education that produces future-ready graduates. With the help of our incredible campus secretaries and counselors, we spent this month highlighting principals through the eyes of their students. We really hope that our community enjoyed that really special glimpse as to who they are as principals and as people. To our principals, your leadership and dedication and hard work make a lasting impact on our students, staff, and community, and we truly appreciate everything that you guys do because it really does make a lasting impact on our students. So, when I call your name, please join Dr. Moran up front, from Bel Air Elementary School, From Bonham Elementary School, Ginger Luther. From Bowie Elementary School, Ashley Gould. From Bradford Elementary School, Marissa Guerrero. From Crockett Elementary School, Ms. Mindy Goodnight, who couldn't be here tonight. From Fannin Elementary School, Ms. April Johnson. From Fort Concho Elementary School, Ms. Laurie Barton, who I don't think is here. From Glenmore Elementary School, who couldn't be here tonight, Ms. Cherry Gould. From Goliad Elementary School, Becca Flores, who is also, couldn't be here. From Holloman Elementary School, Ms. Stacy Fisher. From Lamar Elementary School, Ms. Shannon Claypack. From McGill Elementary School, Colton Curtis. From Reagan Elementary School, Ms. Katie Rudolph. From San Jacinto, who also couldn't be here tonight, Ms. Michelle Beers. From Santa Rita Elementary School, Ms. Kay Scott. From Glenn Middle School, Clayton Hubbard. From Lincoln Middle School, Mr. Joe Gandar. From Lone Star Middle School, Ms. Latonia Sutton. From Central High School, Ms. Jill Ross.
Dr. Kingman, if I can just say something about these principals, as they're getting, going back to their seats. I've been a parent in San Angelo ISD for twenty-something years, and I'm not admitting how old my oldest child is. And I've seen so many of these principals rise from being teachers or counselors that kind of up through the ranks to be principals, and I just want to thank them for all their hard work and dedication to SAISD because watching them as teachers and then grow into leaders of our district has really been something special. So thank you so much for all you do.
All right, that concludes our recognitions. We're going to move forward with public comment. We have one person who signed up, Mr. Virgil Pasetti.
Hello, my name is Virgil Pasetti. I'm a concerned father. Couple of items I wanted to go over today. You know, we do have this election coming up. You know, there's an item on the agenda, and, you know, be it on whatever side you're on, it's not my opinion. However, did have quite a few parents reach out to me wanting to know about what happened to the foundation at San Jacinto. I know you received the information back from the forensic engineer, from the insurance company. I did a good faith PIA, Public Information Act request, and I was told that they're sending it to review to the governor because that information could be used for terrorism. All we want to know was, was it an act of nature or a failure to maintain the facility? That's all the parents want to know. And not telling us that right before an election is not a good look. All you have to do is release the information. You've had it for over a month. Just let us know what happened. I mean, if it truly was an earthquake and that's what the insurance company said, just let us know, and then we can let that go. And if it was failed to maintain the building, then we need to see why that happened and put measures in place to prevent that from happening because kids could have got hurt. My second thing was talking about finance last week. I was looking over, we got over a million dollars in CDs drawing less than 2%. I did a PIA for that, asked for that contract to see what the terms were, got denied. We also have 1.7 million in a cash account drawing less than 3%, and I know there's local banks here, if you put more than 10,000 in, you can get 4% right now. So if you're transparent, let us see what those contracts are and what the terms are. I mean, it's our tax dollars, too, it's not just yours. And the last one is, I was looking through, I know our treasurer said that, you know, he looked through a million dollar transaction, he was concerned about how much ground beef we bought. I did notice $165,000 going to a company called Panorama to do a survey. So, does it cost that much to do a survey? And then I look into the company and come to find out Merrick Garland's son-in-law is one of the founders, and one of the venture capitalists for that was Mark Zuckerberg. You know, I know y'all say that y'all are conservative Republicans. I went around and asked a lot of people today, do you want our school dollars going to a company that was founded by Merrick Garland's son-in-law and financed by Mark Zuckerberg? You want all our data going to those people in Boston, Massachusetts? Is there not a company in Texas that can do that, or maybe in San Angelo? So, you know, I know you get to spend the money, but, you know, we do have concerns about where our data is going, and that one does scare me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pasetti. All right, moving forward, we're going to have some information items, and the first thing up is a construction update, and Mr. Henry's going to help us with that.
Want to thank you all for having me here tonight. I have Ty Sisco with Park Hill Architects, and he's going to go through the slideshow tonight for us on our major construction projects.
All right. Okay, let's start with McGill. Site work continues, site concrete. If you've been by there, the playground is now up, it looks really good. The painting has been done. The kitchen equipment continues to go in, but it's about through as well. Toilet partitions are going in, and the ceiling grid is going in over there as well. Let's get to the pictures. If you haven't been by there, it's looking really good. It's coming along. The site work is progressing. Inside, moving along well. That's a shot there of the kitchen equipment. The flooring is in, they're just keeping it protected with some overlay there, but flooring is all in. The ceiling grid there on the right-hand side is in, so it will match on the left. It hasn't been installed, but that's what it will look like on the right-hand side. Again, the flooring's in, it's just covered. Let's see, over at Fannin, the millwork is now in. It was a little bit behind, but it's been installed. Some site work still going in, landscape, irrigation, some more site work as far as concrete. The ramp that goes down to the playground is being installed and formed currently, some of the chain link fencing as well, caulking on the exterior joints, and the hand railing is going in currently. There's a shot on the right-hand side of the millwork that's been installed in the classrooms. The left-hand shot is the connector corridor between the new and the old building, looking really good there. So you can see that that's the chain link fence along the alley side or the drop-off lane, and the detention pond is on the right-hand side. So the saw's been installed there. That's really about it. Hopefully, you've been able to go by and take a look, but I think things are progressing, looking good. Any questions or anything for me?
Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, next, we have a discussion regarding the TSDS transition to EDFI data standards, and it looks like Dr. Brand's going to probably set that up, and then someone else is going to probably explain it.
Well, just a quick brag before Mr. Combs starts. Eric Combs, our Data Services Manager, so everything that goes on in the pupil services, data services world, PIMS, Mr. Combs leads that, and he's got a great team. And you'll see on one of the slides, the work that he does across the state is very impressive. And so, I'll just go ahead and turn it over to him.
Thank you. First of all, you know, a lot of people are probably like, well, what is EDFI? It stands for the Education Data Framework Initiative, and it started quite a while ago. What we've been doing was version 1.0 of it, and we're now up to version 5.2.1 is what the state is on, and the state is transitioning from the old version 1 to that new version. It is a set of technologies and data standards that helps school districts and state education agencies integrate student data from multiple systems, and we use it for both the state reporting and the federal reporting where we get all our funding from. So it's, we try to make sure it's as accurate as possible and keep it up to date for us. What we've done in prep for this change, because we went from a file submission to an automated programming interface submission type, we've been in the pilot in school year 2023. We participated in the parallel in the school year 2024. We've served on the TSDS Deployment Advisory Group, and what that group does is actually do the templates for all the other districts in the state to onboard and get up to speed for this year's submission. This year's fall submission is our first data submission that we have to do, as well as the, all the charter schools had to do the charter school waitlist already, and so they actually got to be the first ones to use the new system. Everyone else is getting up to speed and getting it going. We served on the On Time Federal Reporting Focus Group. You guys have probably seen something come out about that. There's an early notice about next year's levers, and levers is where we report our graduates every fall right now, but next year, we will be reporting them in the fall, again in the summer, and in the extended year submission. So going forward, it will be every summer and every extended year, which is part of the reason for this entire upgrade in order to get back on track with the federal government so the entire state doesn't lose federal funds. We have to get our data back in compliance because we've been out of compliance for two years as a state, and we have to be sure we get that data in on time. And the only way to do that is for them to get the data faster, so the only way to get it faster is to be more transactional and getting it there quicker, which is the whole point of the EDFI upgrade, is getting transactional data almost real-time, but not quite real-time yet, but it's getting there. Next, we serve on the Vendor Certification Designation Council. I just finished that next spreadsheet today, and I can tell you, our fall data is about 83% complete with our vendor. It's in a good spot because some of the other vendors are way further behind than that. The next version of the software we're going to is further ahead than that, so that's why we're going to it. And then some vendors, you know, claim to be done, but they're really not because we, sitting on the committee, you get to see where they're truly at, and they're all sitting about 80, 85% at the most. So we're, of course, we have from now till December to get everything 100% complete, and then resubmission is in January to be fully complete. So we seem to be on track for that. Vendor's got some updates coming, the state's got some updates coming, so hopefully we'll get it all worked out on both ends. And then the final thing that we're currently serving on is the Policy Committee for Public Education Information. I've been serving on that for about five years now, and that actually, we work on data deduplication, so we're not submitting the same data in multiple submissions through different entities, and we try to get rid of duplicate data submissions, like the fall class roster, we no longer have to do that. We voted on that last year, it's gone. So that's amazing for all the districts because it's a lot of extra data that we really don't have time to submit. So some of the positive outcomes, near-real-time data available for the state use in data analysis, faster identification of data entry errors, a good example of that is, like miscoded discipline would be identified right away instead of waiting till the summer PIM submission, because right now, if you've been in the classroom or a principal and somebody says, hey, what happened back in August on this discipline in the second day of school, and here we are in May trying to code it because somebody didn't code it quite correctly, and you're like, well, I don't know, that was six months ago, seven months ago. So it'll help us identify stuff like that, that's some of the advantages to it. us identify stuff like that. That's some of the advantages to it. Some of the challenges we have, concerns for accurate data due to the limited validation during the pilot and parallel year, that was caused by delays by both the vendor and TEA. The only submission we got to 100% verify was the mid-year submission, which I consider the easiest submission, because it is the actual expenditures for the district. And even that didn't match 100%, but that made sense to us, because the, the way the systems rounded, one, one, you sum it first and then round, the other way you round and then sum. And so, the, the new, the new way sums and then rounds, the old way rounded and then summed. So, that, just that minor change makes a difference when you're trying to verify all the data for the district. And, but once we realized that, it actually matched, and that was the week they took the parallel system offline, so we didn't get the opportunity to finish verifying all the others. Other drawback, this is the only way to submit data this year. There is no file submissions, it has to be through the API to the state, and so we have no choice but to get it right and get it done. So we will. And then both vendors and TEA are publishing software updates weekly at the moment, causing more downtime when we would normally be verifying data, so that's a bit of a challenge. Trying to make sure my staff is not too stressed out from that, but just try to keep them encouraged and let them know that this is what happened the last time. Anytime there's a major grade, it's just growing pains. Any questions? Hopefully I covered most of that good.
I'd like to make a comment. First of all, Mr. Combs, thank you, and to Mr. Medley and your entire team, and Dr. Brandon for working on this. We felt like it was important to bring to the board, because even though it's not a real exciting topic, it is one of the, if not the, most important topics we can discuss, because it's, everything's tied to funding. And the work we do, and the accuracy of data has gotta be on point. And thanks to the positions that our district employees have held at the state level, that gave us a seat at the table with the commissioner about three or four weeks ago. San Angelo and three other districts met with the commissioner and expressed our concerns, because we're in a lot better shape than many other districts. But the reality is that the vendors that are working on this recognize that we may not be ready for this transition, and TEA has acknowledged, but the ships are burned, and there's no turning back. And so, we're in a position now of just working to get it right, but as the commissioner said, it's gonna be a bumpy fall for a lot of districts. And I want to acknowledge the work that you all have done, and thank you for that.
One, one final thing, I did forget, on the VCDC council, there's only 25 districts in the entire state on that, so it's quite an honor to be on that. For our vendor, us, Tomball ISD and Aldine ISD, so we're the smaller out of the three of those. But it's a, it's a great honor to be on there with all of them in order to get all this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Combs, and thank you for your hard work on all that transition for us. All right, we're now gonna have an update on Chapter 37, Texas Education Code and Student Discipline, and Dr. Moran is going to do that, correct?
Yes, sir. All right, so we, this discussion started about a year ago about recruiting and retaining high-quality teachers, and there were enough districts that were concerned about what was going on in the classroom, just feedback from individual teachers and scenarios where we had teachers that were being bitten, kicked, and suffering in the classroom, because the law prevented us from taking certain steps to discipline certain students because of behaviors. And we hear stories, but, and I would like to say that not every classroom is like that every day, but the fact is, we do have teachers that work with very challenging students, and we love those students. That does not mean they're not challenging. And so we're here to, to serve them, but the fact is, over the course of the last three school years, at least 174 employees in San Angelo ISD have been assaulted by a student. And of those 174 employees, we have 72 that have resulted in an injury to that employee who sought medical attention. That's over the past three years. And so, we have a problem. And that problem is, we need to take a really close look at Chapter 37 of the Texas Education Code. Now, just a reminder that the Texas Education Code, TEC, is the law. And so it's what we abide by, it's what you find in the Student Code of Conduct. The Texas Administrative Code is a regulation, it's not the law, but there are 30 districts that have joined together in the course of the past 12 months or so, and looking at how to pinpoint specific needs and develop solutions to those needs. And so we've employed some of the brightest minds across the state to help us craft language so that we can approach our legislators and have a real conversation about looking at Chapter 37. Chapter 37 of the Texas Education Code was written in the 90s, and this Student Behavior Management Coalition has been meeting to look at that. At the inception of Chapter 37, it was five pages long, and now it's about 130 pages. And we, we have brought forward, forward some policy recommendations to be considered, and so I'm presenting those to the board now, not necessarily for any kind of action, but for information's sake, that we will be going to our legislators, having conversations about several things that I'm gonna provide to you tonight. And so the first, obviously, is, let's start with our policy. We have some policies that are, when we read policy, the language is important, the shall language versus the may language, you shall do versus you may do. And sometimes with good intention, legislation is passed that paints teachers and administrators and districts into a box, and we're not able to do what, what is best for the student. The vaping is an example. So a couple of years ago, there was legislative passed that if a student vaped at school, it was mandatory AEP. And not that anyone disagrees with that, because vaping is an epidemic, and it's a horrible thing, and I think we're gonna find out years from now what a terrible thing vaping is for those that are doing it. But for students, it's, it's addictive, and most of the vapes that are confiscated at school are THC vapes. That means they can, they include the marijuana, and it's addictive. And so we've got students that are addicted, and their parents are not aware. And when they get caught at school, then we have to take action. Well, if we, if we place everyone in DAEP, which we have been, we only have a, a limited number of seats at the AEP, I think it's like 85 seats. And I know for a fact, across the state, that many districts don't have that number of seats, and so therefore they stack, they're stacked up, and there's not room in AEP, and the kids end up in the in-school suspension, and, at best. And in some cases, they're exiting students out of AEP to try to move students in, and so it's a workaround. But we need some flexibility there to, to do what we need to do. And suspension limits that have some flexibility, and really, it's all about local control. So priority one for this coalition is local control, to give the board and the school district more control and a little more flexibility to do what's right for students and to help students out. Because ultimately, we want students to conquer these addictions, and we want to help them. Priority two is discipline flexibility. No kid's the same, and every scenario's different, and we found that maybe we need to have a little more flexibility when it comes to removal to DAEP. There's even a time, as an exception, that perhaps a virtual setting might be more appropriate for a student and a parent for a time. And I'm not a fan of virtual learning, but we're talking about preserving the classroom for the teacher and the students that are there. And there are scenarios where a placement into a virtual setting for a time would help, and that is not available to us right now. And then some expulsions for serious offenses. The expulsion limitation is, is pretty narrow for things that are Title V offenses. That may include arson, murder, rape, and those kinds of things. But there arises from time to time, a scenario that it might be appropriate, and the parents are supportive, that an expulsion might be best. And we expel our students to our DAEP. We don't expel kids to the street, but, but sometimes that option might be good. Priority three, safe classrooms for students and teachers. For students that are permitted to continuously disrupt the learning environment and put others at risk, we think that there should be some expansion of, and flexibility there, and really providing some mental health services for these kids, because oftentimes, it's a lack of the skills to cope with what they're dealing with, and how to respond, and be resilient. And then the third part of that is the threat assessment. Priority four, parent rights and responsibilities. Parents are partners, we, we get it. I'm a parent, and I believe in that. We have rights and responsibilities, but we've, we've drifted a little bit, and a lot of times, there's not the parental support from time to time. In rare instances, most of our parents are very supportive. But where we need some muscle to get the parents involved to help us work with their student, because their student may be more challenging than others, and if you'll remember, the old truancy laws, that allowed us to take a student to the justice of the peace and get the parent involved. Maybe even a, some flexibility, before we get to the justice of the peace, to engage with the parent in a written behavior contract, which we can do now, but something that the law would support, that has a little teeth in it, so that we can hold kids accountable that are struggling and that are not able to, don't have the tools to manage their own behavior. Priority five is training and resources regarding best practice, and that's just simply making sure that we've given our teachers and administrators the right support there. So, these things are, are a lot more specific right now in writing, that we're gonna be presenting to our legislators, but I wanted the board to at least know that there's work being done. Not, not because we want to move kids out, but what we want to do is protect the classroom environment, protect our teachers, and then equip students who lack the tools to manage their, their own behavior, and really provide support for the mom and dad that are working hard, but just have a kid that's out of control. And one student can change the climate of a, a classroom and a campus, and we recognize that. So that's, that's the work in Chapter 37 that's being done.
Any questions for Dr. Moran regarding that update? Well, we will stay tuned to what comes from the state, out of the state legislature. There's a lot of things from the state legislature this, this spring, so we'll go from there.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Dr. Brandon's gonna give us an update on Proposition A.
Just a quick update, mostly about the election side of Proposition A. Early voting began October 21. I believe that Ace Hardware did not do the early voting site this year, and so the San Angelo ISD Administration Building is being used as one of the early voting sites. Day one of early voting, approximately 3,000 votes were cast, and 650 were here at the Administration Building. The line was out the door all day, very steady, and then the remainder of the week, that was the case. The last day for early voting, November 1, and then of course, Election Day, Tuesday, November 5. The board, after all of the voting, the board will have to canvas the election. That can be anywhere from three to 14 days, just depending where there's a recount, things of that nature. But once all of the election judge is able to turn all of that over, the elections administrator, the board will canvas the election, and that can be from eight to 19 days. And so that will fall within our window, that that can happen November 11 or November 18 at our regular meeting.
Any questions for Dr. Brandon? I know most people in this room, but just because this is a recorded meeting, obviously, a fact regarding Proposition A is that if someone were to vote yes, it would maintain the same tax rate as last year, and we would get $2 for every $1 that is locally raised, and a total of $6 million to the budget for this, for the three pennies that are maintaining the tax rate from last year.
That is correct. It would be, the $2 million raised locally will be matched at the level of $4 million from the state, for a total of $6 million to the district. And I did have a question asked recently, you know, well, you know, how does the district have to spend that money? And the Board of Trustees has already, in the regular board meeting, said exactly how that money would be used for the recruitment retention of teachers and staff in raises, increasing the teacher, the starting teacher pay to $50,000, which would certainly be the highest of any of the school districts in this area. And then a $2,500 raise for all teachers, and then a 4% increase across our other job families. So those things would happen, along with a armed officer at every campus. Safety is very important to the district, and that was also part of that board meeting. And so those things are there, and yes, those are the things that will happen if Proposition A is approved from the election November 5.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Brandon? All right, thank you for that update. All right, we're gonna move forward with our consent items. We have consent items A through J. Consent item A is our minutes. Consent item B is consider our multi-hazard emergency operations plan. Option C is consider approval of the annual portfolio report ending August 31, 2024. D is consider authorized list of investment brokers and dealers. E is consider authorized list of investment training providers. F is consider CDA local investment policy for SASD. G is bid 20-014 for curriculum and instruction materials. H is considered, is bid 23-25 data cable and AV installation. I is bid 24-22 library books, periodicals, supplies and equipment. And J is appointment of the Health Advisory Council for 24-25. Do I have any board comments or questions regarding consent items A through J? Do I have a motion to approve consent items A through J?
Dr. Keman moved for approval of consent items A through J.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion from Mr. Dindell, and a second from Mrs. Mizel Flint. Any board questions or comments? All in favor of approving consent items A through J, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 6-0. All right, next we have consider bills, accounts and financial statements for August and September of 2024. And this was all discussed at our previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve our bills, accounts and financial statements for August and September of 2024?
Dr. Keman, as you mentioned before, all these reports were reviewed in our previous end of meeting last Monday, and all these reports can be found online at our Financial Integrity tab at sasd.org. With that, I'll move to approve the financial statements for August and September of 2024.
So I have a motion from Mr. Dindell. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second from Mrs. Duncan. Any further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 6-0. Next, we have our consider financial integrity rating for the San Angelo Independent School District, our public hearing, which is part of our first rating. Mr. Brandon?
I'll kind of start off, but also kind of start from the idea of Mr. Jaime Guero is our comptroller, and you normally see him when we have our annual audit, but by the same token, those, all of those things- But by the same token, all of those things go in to the school first report. He's going to present that this evening. He's the true expert. And so we appreciate everything he does in and for the district.
Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, Board of Trustees, I'm Jaime Guerrero, the district comptroller, is Dr. Moran. As Dr. Brandon pointed out, I'm here to present our 2024 first rating from the state of Texas. We'll start with what everyone should be familiar with is our district mission. And one of the ways that our finance team helps forward that mission is to be fiscally responsible and transparent with the funds that have been entrusted to us by our community, by the state, and by the federal government. So we take that seriously. And so does the state of Texas. They take it so seriously that they created an actual rating system to cover the fiscal responsibility and accountability for all school districts in the state of Texas, including charter schools. So the first rating, obviously, you can see by the screens, Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. That is what Texas TEA put in in 1999. Just kind of an overview, the rating system measures the financial accountability for schools. It's administered by TEA, covers a different variety of financial indicators. And I know Dr. Moran, you know, wanted some interesting topics. Well, I'll tell you what, we've got 21 financial indicators that'll just get your pulse going. So the state of Texas rates us on those 21 financial indicators. They have a traditional scoring system from 0 to 100 with a final rating of either A, B, C, or F. And obviously, the F is the one you don't want. So I won't go into detail on every single indicator here, but we'll certainly cover a handful of them. The first five are known as critical indicators. They're immediate pass or fail indicators. So there's no rating attached to it as far as 1 through 100. It's simply yes or no. So any no on these will definitely, will easily get you the F automatically. So indicators one and two have to deal with our annual audit. As Dr. Brandon mentioned, I'm up here usually in the early part of the year to discuss those findings. We've been very fortunate that all our audits have come back unmodified. And I think that's testament to the hard work that our employees do day in and day out. Because even though the audit is over a couple of months, as they put that together, everything that goes into it is what we do every day to make sure that we're doing things correctly. So we received yes on those. We both filed it timely and had unmodified opinion, so we're good there. Indicator three has to do with our debt, both long-term and short-term, really making sure that we pay all our debts, all our bills, utilities, vendors, that we're doing those on time and according to those purchases that we've made. We received a yes on that because we've done that religiously, and so we're proud of that as well. Indicator four has to do with the other kind of side of our obligations, but those are to our employees, all of our obligations to the Texas Retirement System, Texas Workforce Commission, and the IRS, making sure that we submit those deposits on a timely basis and accurately as well. So we received a yes on that. And our fifth one is our net position, which most people will really correlate to fund balance. Do we have that? Do we have the money? Do we have the funds to continue operating? And really, it's more an indication of solvency. And so we've been very fortunate that we've been able to do that under the board's leadership to continue to have a positive fund balance on that. So we received yes on all five indicators, so that cleared our first hurdle. The Romanian indicators, it's kind of a hot pot of different types of requirements. Seven through nine go with solvency, having to do, again, with cash on hand. Do we have money to operate? Do we have more than 75 days of cash to be able to pay our employees, pay our vendors? Do we have enough fund balance to really go as a going concern? If you hear in audit talk, as a going concern. So we received all 10s on each one of those, which is full amount on there. 10 through 13 have to deal with fiscal responsibility, which you deal with every board meeting you come out here. Are we adhering to our budget? Are we preparing a budget that really meets our needs, our revenues at least equaling expenses? And so we've done that successfully under your leadership, and so we received all points on those. 14 through 16 have more to do with the reporting, a little bit of like what Mr. Combs came up and said, having to do with P E M's. Are we reporting our data correctly? Are we coming in within 3% of our final on what we've reported throughout the year? And that's certainly important, because as Dr. Moran mentioned, it all has to do with our funding. So if those numbers aren't correct, we're either being overfunded or underfunded, and that certainly doesn't look good. We received all maximum points on that. 17 through 21 has to do with compliance. Are we adhering to federal and state regulations when it comes to grants, when it comes to all the federal programs that we receive money for? Two of these, 17 and 18, have to do with our audit as well. Does our audit report that we have good internal controls in place? And they have, and they continue to do so. So we received maximum points on that. So he's come down, showed the screenshot there of the actual state report for San Angelo Independent School District for the year 2023-24. We received a total score of 100 points, which gets us into the superior achievement rating of an A. We're always excited and happy to do that, but know that it takes hard work throughout the year to make sure that happens. And this report, you should have the full report, whether it's packaged in front of you or given to you electronically, that shows each individual indicator. And we'll also be making that available on the district website, along with all the other required disclosures that go along with this report. That way, we certainly want to be transparent to our community and all stakeholders in our district, so they can look at that and see the hard work that we put in to make sure that happens. And just as a reminder, our financial department certainly does their fair share of reporting, and they've been recognized, we've all been recognized under Transparency Awards for both the first rating, our ASBO for our audit, and Transparency from the state. So we're always proud of those and continue to make sure that we keep in line with all that. That's the end of my presentation, but does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Guerrero, thank you. Obviously, I know the public hearing is somewhere on that data list as well to make sure we've actually done the public hearing. So this serves as that. We don't actually have to vote or take any action regarding this this evening. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Guerrero, other than a big thank you for all the work you do to make sure that we get this done and get it done well? So thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Guerrero, I'm not sure why your hair is not gray after all these reports that you've got to keep up with, but thank you for your hard work and your staff for, again, this year was, again, we're rated 100, which is an A for sure, but the 100 is awfully, awfully hard to come by. And so we appreciate your work and the work of your staff, too, to achieve that.
Well, I appreciate that. The gray in my hair is due to, you know, the three daughters I have at home. But I'll tell you, it's easy not to get them here, because we work with people that really love what they do. And I come in every day, you know, looking forward to working with them and, you know, putting our best effort to the work that we have, investing it into our kids and to our futures. So it makes it really easy.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to move forward. We have Consider Our Quarterly Investment Report ending August 31, 2024. That's the fourth quarter of our fiscal year. We had just over, our total investments were just over $67 million, and total interest earned was $947,065.79. Does anyone have any questions regarding our quarterly investment report?
Dr. Kingman, I did want to take a quick minute just to, Christina Chavez is not with us this evening. She's our Cash and Investments Manager and Budget Coordinator. But she really does a great job with all of our investments. And we missed this in last month's meeting, so, I mean, last week's meeting, so we needed to bring this forward for approval. But our three main goals in our investment policy, safety of principle, maintain liquidity, and maximize financial returns. And so she's daily, looking at what our balances are in every account, anything that we have that will be coming up for renewal. I mean, she's immediately on that to move it to a higher interest rate. You can see even though that we have a little bit higher fund balance that we had, now we've spent some right on the construction, but we've been able to maximize those returns, like Dr. Kingman said, from last quarter, right at $1 million in interest, $846,000 still this most recent quarter. And then when you compare that to last year, there on page two, $885,000, and then comparable to same ending period in 2024 of $846,000. So we were right there within $40,000, and all of that attributed to being able to move all of those investments from what would be a little bit lower interest rate to higher interest rates. And anything that we have, for example, the lowest one that you see there is 2.87 in agency securities. And so as soon as that is up for renewal, it will immediately be moved to one that's somewhere between 4.5% to 5.5%.
Thank you, Dr. Brandon. Any other board comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve the quarterly investment report ending August 31, 2024?
I'll make a motion to approve the quarterly investment report ending August 31, 2024.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion from Dr. Mills and a second from Mrs. Arroyo. Any other board questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 6-0. All right. Next, we have Consider Official Appointment of the Board of Trustees and MHMR Services for the Contra Valley. And although Mrs. Mizal Flint will have to refuse herself from the vote on this, but she can stay here in the room. So this is the official appointment of the nominees as requested by the liaison representatives to provide a duly constituted Board of Trustees. It's required by the Texas law regarding mental health and mental retardation. And it's for approval of the nominees as recommended by the liaison representatives. And it's for Kerry Houston, Linda Kujowski, Don McKee, San Jesus Singh, and Drew Peterson. Any board questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the nominees?
Dr. Kingman moved for approval of the official appointment of the nominees as recommended by the liaison representatives.
So I have a motion from Mr. Dindell. Do I have a second?
I second.
Mrs. Duncan was not fast enough. Mrs. Arroyo was on the mic. So we have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Mrs. Arroyo. Any further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 5-0.
And Dr. Kingman, let the record show that Amy Mizal Flint abstained from that vote, just to make sure that's part of the record.
Thank you, Dr. Moran. All right. Announcements, we have our next Finance and Pre-Agenda Workshop on November 11, 2024. We have a regular board meeting on November 18, 2024. And Election Day is November 5, 2024. Any further board questions, comments? All right. With that, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.